Oh, that'll be a stretch, Jessie.
Yeah.
I don't know. I might fix it if you want, I don't know.
You'll have to.
Yeah.
Um.
But no, so he keeps asking for this.
And he's going to be able to get in himself.
But he's still there.
So he's wonderful as.
Yes.
Oh.
But it's just like, yeah, it's just getting received.
But it's like, yeah, you're missing something.
And it can't, it's pretty big, but it can't really make sense.
So then what else?
You're fine.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Oh.
Do you want me to ask Michael to tell him?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And you're fine.
Oh, that's gotta be.
Oh, oh, I'm so keen for you. I can't wait. It's just a good one. Bite your tongue. You're dying. You're bleeding. It's just so good.
Oh.
He, he does well. I'm surprised to go.
Wow.
What was it, wow?
Wow.
Oh, that's funny.
Um, yeah, this is just another guy's one. There is, there is a.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. What do you think? Yeah. What do you think? Yeah. What do you think?
He, he does well. I'm surprised to go. Wow.
What was it, wow?
That's funny.
Um, yeah, this is just another guy's one. There is, there is a.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah. 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 I think, I'm coming. I'm sorry. There's just a lot going on. Thank you. Cute, cute, cute. Thank you. I gotta get ready. Seat. Oh, okay, my chair is like completely, there we go. We'll wait just a second. All right, so what do, how, how do you guys want me to proceed? Pastor? Pastor, how do you want me to proceed? Because I certainly don't want to put this on tonight if you're gonna, if you're uncomfortable about it, but then we need to pull her in. Are you sure? Okay. Okay. Yes. But I think we can do plenty of the whole thing about, because I tell you what, I still have questions. I've been doing this almost ten years and I still have questions. So I don't want anybody to see our. Yeah. Yeah. Well, we need to do our bargaining units and then the other pieces, all of it, so, okay. Um, will somebody read, who wants to read the mission statement tonight?
I did last.
I know you did. Jessie, you wanna do it? No? India, you, Lyle? Rhonda, you're gonna do it. Awesome, you guys. All right. Okay. One, we'll be here, we're ready, ready. And my, and my mic is on, so. In that my mic is on, good evening. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Rhonda McRina will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools, is it?
I think so.
Okay.
I think you're good.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Rhonda. Especially for me putting you on the spot, I appreciate it, so. The next item on our agenda then is our board celebration this evening for why Waterloo schools, and this is something that we've been doing during our board meetings to hear a little bit about the passion and the interests of our folks who work in our district and hear why they have chosen Waterloo. And, and so this evening, Jamie Herring is here from Carver, and I think he, yes, she's, I can't see you over there, Jamie, I'm sorry.
I know, I sat right behind this computer.
Great.
I'm sorry, I'm really short.
You're not.
Which my kids like to make fun of me for, of course.
You're perfect, you're perfect.
Um, well, hello, everybody. Again, my name is Jamie Herring, and I'm the sixth through eighth grade band teacher at Carver Middle School, where I also coach volleyball, cheerleading, and track and field. And then this year I will also be joining the East High staff as the JV softball coach. So it's really nice to be here. This is my first year in the district. Last year I taught at Wopsee Valley, just up the road from here. I am a Whortburg grad. There's a few of us in the district amongst all the purple and yellow. Um, and while I was at Whortburg, I had many experiences in Waterloo, because it's the diversity placement, which I don't necessarily agree with, because Waterloo is great and you should send the kids there to more, to fit more than just, you know, a quota. So that was my first exposure to Waterloo, where I got to work with the band teachers at Hoover Middle School, and it was a phenomenal experience. I started falling in love with the kids as soon as I walked in the door. They were welcoming, they were a lot of fun to work with, and, I don't know, they just made me feel right at home right away. After that, I had an experience when Tim Purdom was still here at Highland Elementary, which was so much fun. Elementary music is great. If you ever have a chance to get in an elementary music classroom, do so, because they are a hoot and a half. Um, and they just made me fall in love with Waterloo even more. Um, after that, though, I found myself out in Denver, Colorado, to complete my student teaching, which made me fall in love with kind of the city life, which is funny, because Denver is very much like Waterloo, where it has that small-town feel, even though there's lots of people around. And that brought me back to Iowa. I wanted to get in the door at Waterloo right away, um, but there were no band openings, and I found myself, still close, though, um, at Wopsee Valley. While at Wopsee Valley, I had lots of friends who still taught in Waterloo, and I heard all the stories, and I stayed in touch, um, with directors in the area, and as soon as there was an opening, I could not wait to get my foot in the door and apply, um, to be a band teacher here in the district. Now, since being here in Waterloo, I have never once, you know, second-guessed that this is where I'm supposed to be. Um, through the interactions I have with students in the hallways, I swear, every other kid gives me a hug, and it's the best feeling in the world. Uh, one of our other teachers was just recently gone, um, to watch one of her sons graduate from boot camp, and she said, if you ever want to feel like a rock star, just be gone for a few days, and then come back to all the hugs that you get. And, you know, I have that feeling every single day, I love it. Um, so whether or not it's a kid passing me in the hallway, giving me a hug, or just saying hi, good morning, whatever, it makes me feel so loved and so welcome still, you know, whatever month this is, April already, oh my goodness, um, in my first year here in the district. Um, aside from just that, teaching in the classroom with these students is incredible. When I see that spark, that light in a student's eyes, when they finally get something, I have this adorable sixth grader who plays clarinet, and today, she was like, I can't play this song. I was like, well, why not? And she's like, well, I don't know how to play E-flat. And so another clarinet player showed her, showed her how to play it, and then boom, instantly it was fixed, the light wasn't her eye, she was like, oh, I can do this, this is no problem now. Um, so, you know, those little moments that you have is just incredible, and being able to experience that with the students, um, is one of those things why I love Waterloo. As much as, you know, we like to say that teachers are in charge of classrooms, I would probably disagree with you on that and say, no, the kids are in charge. I don't go a single day where I don't learn more from my students than I feel like I actually teach them. The patience that they teach me, the love that they teach me, and, you know, teaching me how to laugh even when things aren't going exactly right. We started a song, this just happened today as well, um, and one of the clarinet players, if you ever have been in band, you understand squeaks, especially with saxophones and clarinets. Um, we, yep, yep, so we go to start this song, and as soon as we hit the downbeat, just one of the clarinets squeaks the loudest squawk I think I've ever heard from a clarinet, and all I could do was turn around and burst out laughing, because what do you do? Um, so that was pretty great. Um, but in all, really, I choose Waterloo, because you'll never find students that you will love more, or students that will love you more. So that's my why Waterloo.
Thank you so much, Jamie. And for a first-year teacher putting you on the hot spot, I love it.
Oh, I know. Thanks, Ms. Mulholland.
That's great, so.
Did you coach, did you coach softball at Wopsee Valley?
I did not, no, I was, um, a track coach there. And then I miss softball a lot from my college days and from when I was in school, so when I saw an opening, I also don't.
Anything else for her?
I'm sorry, I should've stayed.
No, you're fine, that's all right. It's just that I can't see around the monitor.
I know, yeah, I can stand up.
That's okay, we'll stand up, sit down. All right, the next item on our agenda then is a board celebration, and as I will ask Jerry Thornsberry, um, who is the Chair of the Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District, to come forward and tell us a little bit more, but we are honoring four amazing teachers this evening, and I just have to start by saying that actually my children have all benefited from having all four of these amazing women. So I'm very, very excited to introduce Tamara Willis, as well as Susan Johnson, and Ann Alshweed, and Vera Sue McGee, um, because they all have near and dear spots in my heart from having had my children be, um, and learn a lot from all of them. So with that, Jerry, I'll turn it over to you, and I know there's a lot more to say about these four amazing people.
There sure is, and thank you. Um, Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District has been around about forty-five years, and so we've been installing conservation practices both out in the farm ground and in town also, because we're all about protecting our soil health and improving our water quality. And what is so thrilling to me is that when teachers are instilling these values in the wee ones, and when they grow up, they too can be commissioners. It's really wonderful. So, um, our award meeting was held with the Iowa Corn and Soybean Association, and, um, we had a big dinner and a recognition, and we wanted to share with you and the public how we feel about these teachers. And our first honoree is Tamara Willis from Hoover Middle School, and Mike Henning is one of our Assistant Commissioners at the Conservation District, and he also is very active in Orange Elementary. So Tamara, um, is a sixth-grade science teacher and at Hoover, and she leads the first Lego League group called Hoover Bionic Bandits. Tamara partnered with the Green Iowa AmeriCorps and the Dry Run Creek Watershed Improvement Project that works out of Cedar Falls, um, to work with the Bionic Bandits for their Lego League project to address the challenges faced by modern uses of water and hydrology. The students researched rain gardens, created a presentation, and proposed to have a rain garden installed at their school. Based on district recommendations, the students chose the layout for the rain garden, and then presented it to the Waters, Waterloo City Council during a work session, and, uh, they, you know, presented their research, and they had done it so well, they were encouraging Waterloo to implement more rain gardens throughout the community. An educational initiative is also planned to hang informational posters around the school so that other students understand the benefits of rain gardens. Tamara has gone out of her way to write grants and secure funding to help cover the costs for installing the rain garden and raised over five hundred dollars. This rain garden will be installed in April, May, status?
Um, this Thursday.
Thursday, good. Partnering with the Bionic Bandits, with you and I volunteers for the construction of the rain garden. The site will be utilized to encourage further conservation practice adoption between Waterloo Community Schools and the families of students at Hoover Elementary. Congratulations, Tamara. We have a special presentation. Uh, this is a program I had not heard of, and it's over forty years old, so it's pretty remarkable. Um, Susan Johnson, Ann Alshweed, and Vera Sue McGee began their tireless role as citizens conservationists. With their zeal, they are teaching the wonders of the natural world in an outdoor school to fifth graders at Orange Elementary. But a little history, in January nineteen seventy-nine, Susan and Ann created Camp.
Ewalu.
Ewalu, an outdoor school program at Crest Haven Elementary in Waterloo, and now the program is offered to fifth graders at Orange Elementary. The goals of this camping program held at Camp Ewalu, five hundred and forty-five acres of wooded land near Strawberry Point, continues to be threefold, to give the child an opportunity to recognize the possibility of personal satisfaction from inside into the world of nature. Two, to give the pupil an opportunity to relate what he or she has learned in school with firsthand realistic situations experienced outdoors. And three, to give the child an opportunity to experience firsthand the elements of democratic living needed today. Activities included in this camping program are bird study, night hike with involves owl calling, tree identification, animals native to Iowa, orienteering, geology of Iowa, ice fishing, Native American study, a study of the night sky, snow shoeing, cross-country, skiing, ice skating, sledding, outdoor cooking, a talent show, and compiling a diary of the students' memories. Also, students travel to Osborne Nature Center near El Cader, where they visit the nature center and observe the live native, um, animals that are, um, evident here in wintertime in Iowa. The success of this program is the volunteers. They have had several people who started when their children came to camp and have faithfully kept coming to help each year. Some of the parent volunteers were former students who attended when they were in the fifth grade. Amazing. When Susan and Ann retired in twenty-ten, the program continued under the direction of Vera Sue McGee. Susan and Ann continue to volunteer each year. This program is over forty years old, and we certainly hope for another forty years. This is a remarkable program. Thank you so much. Would you like to say some advertising about the program?
Oh, well, we just also hope that it will continue for forty more years, and over the years, we have come to the board several times to get approval to keep the program going, and so we hope if teachers have to continue to come, that you will continue to support the program, because we think it is awesome, and we are so happy that the kids at Orange get to continue the, the program. We, we think it's wonderful. Thank you for your support.
Does any other, does any other school participate?
No, just Orange.
Just Orange?
You all could volunteer.
For now, for now.
Any other questions?
For forty years.
For forty years.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing us to honor these teachers.
Thank you, all four of you, yes. Thank you, Jerry, appreciate that very much. It's great to have things to celebrate, that's the best, so. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask if there was anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board, and if so, come forward and state your name and address. You guys are all science teachers, come on, you sure you don't have anything? All right. Then seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of six items. They are the minutes of the April ninth, two thousand eighteen, regular and special board meetings, item C, personnel appointments and adjustments, item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item E, open enrollment appeal, which is item F, the adoption of high school science curriculum, which is item G, and the administrator and administrative support salaries for two thousand eighteen-nineteen, which is item H. Can I have a motion to put those items on the table, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Jessie, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any items which board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item G?
Item G, which is the adoption of the high school science curriculum.
Item D, Delta.
Item D, which are personnel appointments and adjustments. Anything further? Then I would entertain a motion to approve items C, E, F, and H.
So moved.
So, India, second in, yep, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that, we already moved in second, so, there we go. Then all those in favor of approving items C, E, F, and H, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Uh, Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item D, which is on page eight, and these are the personnel appointments and adjustments, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
And discussion.
Uh, yeah, I'm just curious to ask you the rules on, uh, leave of absences, I see an individual here is returning from leave of absence and then being approved for another leave of absence.
I can't, I can't tell you the particulars of the type of leave of absence, but, um, it may be a family medical leave, it may be a transition leave, can, can you?
So can they be?
Two, up to two years.
Okay.
Up to two years.
And they're just approved for one year or so?
One year at a time, and then we.
At a time.
Yeah. We will check with them, anyone that's on a leave, to make sure they have no intention of returning, and then we'd extend that for an additional year.
But then the effective date also, the effective date of the return is April sixteenth. The.
Who are we looking at?
Effective date.
Of the name was three thirty.
Of that is three thirty. So. There's an overlap there, I guess I don't.
Um, I can't tell you the particulars of it, but there's a reason why they had the opportunity to do that.
All right. Thank you.
It's medical in nature.
Okay. Okay, so it's two years of, for the same reason, or is it two years?
It's typically for the same reason. Um, a lot of leaves would be like a transition leave, if a person's going to school and has to do their student teaching, has to complete, finish their degree, many times it's an individual who might have a chronic health condition that might turn, might require additional time. So, um, in some instances, a person will come back for a portion, but their medical condition will not allow them to continue, so they have to go back on leave.
Okay, thank you.
Beth, there's a, there's a question, and I think it's a good one.
Absolutely.
Um, the question is about whether if somebody goes out on FM, FL, FM LA for a year or two, what happens when they come back? Do they get their sa, are they guaranteed their same position, or how does that work?
FM LA is only twelve weeks. So, yes.
So what about trend, so what about transition?
Transitional leaves, or a leave when they're, uh, gone for two years, up to a year. After ninety days, if they don't have sick leave, if it's an actual leave, it's where there's an open position. So we're not holding a position for an individual. If it's a leave that's more than ninety days, they would come to, back to the open position that, for which they qualify. And that's one of the reasons why we're, we've already started making calls to people, saying, are you planning on coming back? Because then we have to put them in, you'll see people are returning for leave, so we have to put them in the staffing equation to make sure there's a position available for them that they qualify for.
Is there anything further for Dr. Smith on personnel? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item then is item G, which is on page twenty-five. And that recommended motion, Sue, you want me to read it?
Sure.
All right. Yeah, you want me to read all those textbooks, don't you? The Board of Education approved the adoption of the Active Physical Science, Active Physics, Living by Chemistry, Biology, Environmental Science Issues and Solutions, and Holds Human Anatomy and Physiology Science Curriculum for High School Physical Science, Physics, Chemistry, Biology, Ecology, and Anatomy and Physiology in the amount of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and one cent.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
All right, you two gonna arm wrestle? All right, and discussion. I know we have our group of, um, science teachers who have been on the, on the, um, recommending committee that are here this evening, and I don't know, Sue, if you've got, you want to lead us off?
I, I guess if, um, whoever wants to, um, talk a little bit about the process, to let the public know the process that was involved in, um, the choosing of these specific books.
Just randomly pick one of you.
I guess, basically.
Can you come forward and stand at the mic, you guys? I'm sorry to, we just can't, they can't pick up the sound.
Maybe everybody can come with you for moral support.
Right. You guys should be proud of this work, this is a lot of work, so, very, we'd like to acknowledge you, too.
We had a rubric, um, that was based on the new NGSS standards, that, and the NGS, basically the NGSS standards, what they do is they incorporate a storyline and a phenomenon, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to teach kids within context in science, instead of just throwing out these concepts that really don't have a rhyme or reason, and so we're trying to present them a rhyme or a reason before we present the, the concepts to them. Um, that's the big shift, the, in the next generation, generation science standards, and so we had a rubric that, um, identified these areas, as well as the content area, and we went through and, and looked at all the materials that were available. I do have to say that the textbook companies are scrambling to catch up to the NGSS science standards as well, and so there's not a lot available right now, um, but we did what we could with what we had, and that's how we made our decisions. We looked at the rubric and see, saw how things were scored, and generally went with the highest-scoring textbooks.
Thank you. Was there much disagreement, or?
Um, no, I think generally everyone agreed. Uh, you know, we all have our content areas that we're pretty specific about, and so we each grabbed, you know, the content area that, that is special to us, and that's kind of how we decided, and then I think generally, most of us agreed with, with what we, we all agreed on what we were doing, I think.
Is, is there more or less physical experimentation?
Definitely more, and, and another great, uh, aspect of this is that there's a lot of literacy and writing that goes along with these texts, um, journaling, things like that, and, and it, it kind of aligns itself with the big push for literacy here in the district as well, so, um, that's one of the things that we looked at, too, to make sure that we could align with cross-content, content, a lot of other things we're looking at, so.
Are there things, particularly near a technology, that would, would add to the experience that we don't have?
Well, yeah, there's always technology that can add to the experience.
That and the pot of gold.
Yeah, but I think that those are factored into the, I mean, the things that we really needed, I think, are already factored into the budget, is that right, Angela?
But there's some, I mean, there's some amazing things, what I'm thinking of, I look, I glanced through these a little bit, and one of the things I saw was, was home energy use, and there's a, I don't know how that's gonna be collected or estimated, or I think, I really didn't get into that sort of detail, but, for example, there's a device now that you can put on your home meter, and it will tell you every appliance, because it, it identifies the signature of a refrigerator versus a microwave versus something else. I just wondered if any thing like that is part of, or anticipated to be part of your program.
I mean, we have a few things, we have, um, the, the veneer stuff that we'll be using with, um, uh, what am I looking, um?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, uh, I'm trying to think of where the, thank you, they're probes, and they're, uh, are, you know, we've got the carts that measure speed and velocity and all of those things, and I think that actually we'll be using those more with this new adoption, uh, in curriculum. There's one entire chapter, I believe, in Active Physics where we just talk about motion, and, and we use those carts, and we, you have to use those carts in order to come to your conclusion, so. There, um, it'll be nice to teach all of this stuff within context. So the students are like, great, this is all well and good, but why? Well, now we have the why. Why, why this science curriculum? Because it provides the why.
Chris, I, I always examine these for whether there's some politicalization in, in the textbooks. Actually, I mean, this is mostly the hard science, so there isn't as much opportunity. There was a couple areas that I just assumed that US teachers are going to, you know, give both sides of the
Of course.
Of the thing. One of them was, uh, all watershed, and that end result might be that farmers might have to use less fertilizer and potentially go out of business. And that's a fair conversation, but on a broader scale, the farmers aren't gonna go out of business.
Well, sure not.
Food prices are gonna rise, is what's gonna be, you know, so those sorts of things.
But I think it's important to have the conversation.
Yeah.
Like, it's the conversation and the thought process that is really important here, not necessarily the right or the wrong.
Right.
It's about the discussion, the thinking, so.
In this particular case, if it was scale, if it's one farmer, that may be the case.
Sure.
If you generally apply it, then there's a totally different, different result, and then I didn't get into the GMOs too much, but, but.
Right, well, you're never gonna have a perfect book.
Well, and, and in that case, you know, I would encourage, if necessary, I mean, get some experts, because that, that field is, you know.
Sure, I, yes.
Really debatable, and there's, I don't think anybody can be really an expert in, in that.
A lot of this stuff is really new, so.
Well, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and Lyle, and I think one of the things you were saying is the opportunity for cross curriculum studies, so for example, as Lyle was referencing, when, when we, when we're teaching our kids critical thinking, we can add an economics lesson to this physics lesson, as well as, um, a, a little science.
A little history of maybe the
Right.
The way that farming has occurred here in Iowa. I mean, there's lots of ways that we can present this information, and so.
One of the things I appreciate about that is because it does allow our students to, to use their critical thinking skills, and to go over some of those more controversial topics with, within science. I look specifically with regard to our career academies. One of the things I liked about these sets of books is for the, the case study scenarios that are used for nursing, because I, I know our nursing program is growing, and I think about those students that will go off to Hawkeye, or to Iowa, or to Allen, to pursue some of the health sciences, and so I like how this company has those interactive case studies that are more than just quantitative, but they have those, um, those narrative analysis type things that go with them, and also for students who want to pursue welding, or, or some of the other program, graphic design. So I, I just kinda like that, and I know Matt was talking to us a couple weeks ago about the Chromebooks and how they could be used in conjunction with our current textbooks to give our students some hands-on, so that's pretty neat.
Yep.
And I just learned that you can use your smartphone as a probe, use them, yeah, that part. So I just thought that was pretty neat, so.
And I just wanna piggyback on that. I know Lyle's talked about it times. It'd be nice for us to have our own Waterloo Core, our own Waterloo set of standards, and I think what I'm hearing you say is that this, this curriculum is, is a tool in the toolbox, and that each of you will be able to mold it and use it and bring in your, you know, bring in your experts and do all that. Obviously, we follow the Iowa science standards, but I think it's gonna be great that we can put some of our own personal stamp on it here, and I think that's great, so I just wanna encourage you to.
I promised myself I wouldn't bring up the Waterloo Core issue.
I did it for you, so. But in any case, we have talked about it many times, so.
And I think it is, it would be worth, you know, things that you feel are gaps for the next teacher, for other teachers, to, to just jot them down. It doesn't have to be a real formal thing, but these are the things in Waterloo, particularly because of, you know, we're an agricultural community and so forth, that might apply, that might not be, you know, important enough across the nation, so.
But here.
I, I still support a Waterloo Core.
And can you delineate that then, because you were talking about the next generation science standards, and they're bringing up the Iowa Core, so how do they align?
Iowa science standards is what I was bringing up.
Well, um, I think there is a, there is a break from the Common Core. Like I said, the, but I think that the basic fundamental difference is that the Common Core said, these are the concepts that you have to present. The next generation science standards say, these are the things that you need to present, but this is why. This is the context that we're putting these in, and then this is how you need, these are the, these are the concepts that you need to have in order to solve these problems, or in order to talk about this issue. This is, this is the information that you need to have. So I'm, I think that we're still hitting those, those core concepts, it's just now it's within a storyline or a phenomenon, or within a context.
I just thought to clarify for the audience and stuff, cause you're throwing out these acronyms and.
Sure.
Do you, particularly the high school classes, do you ever take any of the kids out to the Career Center and see some of those stuff going on there?
Yeah, um, okay, sophomores went out today.
Yeah, it's kinda interesting, cause I'm looking at like, you know, in the physics books here, you're getting into heat transfer, and you think about, you know, how a kid could practically go look at a, a part being machined and see why you would use cooling on there to cool the part while you're machining it, you know, all that stuff kinda falls into, you know, taking heat away from the part and stuff, so.
Sure.
Very practical examples that we have within our district that, you know, my, my background, engineering background, you know, I spent a lot of time studying theoretical.
Sure.
And didn't get over to trade, trade school enough, and it really hurt me in my career when I first started, and having that well balance of knowing this, and seeing how it really applies in, you know, when you get to industry, particularly for the kids that are heading out an engineering type path.
Yep, it, it will feed really well into that, actually.
And then, the, you know, and I, I support the literacy content too, because I saw many a time where we had, even in college, we had, you know, students who just couldn't put a lab report together. They could memorize a book and not even study for a test, but you ask them to do a lab report, take measurements and stuff like that, and the practical side, which is really what you get when you get in the real world, they struggle with, I mean, so. But I do like, I do like the physics books. I like the real life examples. I can, I can remember actually having a, a test question in heat transfer on how long it took to get a steak at a certain temperature in the center, and it had to have all the boundary conditions and stuff. It was pretty fun. I wish you would've had a lab to go with it, but unfortunately we didn't.
Let's see if we can talk to the Iowa beef producers about that.
Or maybe not, if you would've gotten an F on that.
We, we have an award-winning culinary arts team, and so, you know, that would be a great paid course. Nutrition and physics, I'm just saying.
Chemistry.
No, good job on this though. I like the physics book here.
Does it make a really good transition with the new science for the middle school?
Yeah, we've, Angela has been doing a great job working with all levels, um, trying to get us all coordinated, so that it should be an easy transition from elementary to middle school, from middle school to high school.
Perfect. Uh, just a quick question, and the board may be able to answer it. How, um, old was the previous science material that we had before we got this new one?
I can tell you, yeah, ten years. I can tell you exactly with our physical science. I was just having the kids look at it the other day, and it's two thousand nine.
Got it.
So, it's time.
It's time.
Thanks.
I think most of the equations are the same though, aren't they?
Well, and I think, I think Dr. McNulty can speak to this too, but we actually probably would have proceeded with an adoption a little bit earlier, but with the new, the next generation standards, we were truly waiting until we had those, and, and as you know, that, that has to be state-approved, and so once that happened, then we could move forward, and then it's just, you don't just snap your fingers, you actually have to go through a process, and it takes some, a while, so.
So is there software associated with this, the students can put on their Chromebooks or not?
Well, sure, the veneer probes, and there's some active physics stuff that we will be using, absolutely. Um, Caitlin actually piloted some stuff, did. Okay, Alex.
There's, there's free software now for the Chromebooks that tracks all the data collection for the student in real time, so they can take like, they can take two samples per second. It's pretty great.
You know, I just wanna add two things. One is we have outstanding professionals, and there's some great leadership. Angela and Angela Lee have done a great job of, of moving the high school professionals forward, but the high school professionals are amazing. I've been able to be part of the PLC at West, and, and have been in dialogue, and, and it's just, it's amazing, it's just brilliant to watch. But we are at an intersection, and I think what's exciting is we're talking about cross-curricular engagement, problem-solving, thinking, hands-on experiences for career and technical education. But as Mr. O'Brien would point out, we are at the intersection of moving from hard copy to the digital world. And we're gonna be probably in that space for a while. And I just can't tell you how, how critical it is that Mr. O'Brien is in our district to keep us honest and, and forthright, and how lucky Waterloo is to have professionals like this, so, how exciting.
So with that, we might also have, have the teachers that are here say their names, but I, in the background, and I don't think they're gonna come up here, but I want to just, Angela Hewitt is in the back.
The whole district science committee out there.
Yep, they, Angela was, um, she actually came to our district via the Waterloo Schools Foundation. She was Iowa's first STEM coordinator, and she was paid for out of dollars that were donated to us from the foundation, and so she has kind of transitioned a little bit into STEM and science and the connections there. Over to her left, Dr. Aquaji Anderson. Newly Dr. Aquaji Anderson is our curriculum director, and she replaced Dr. Lee last year, and so I don't know, just, it's good to put a face with a name. And then right up here, behind the front row, we have Angelie Myers, and she heads up the Science Committee, so. And then the teachers can say their own names, cause I'm not gonna venture a guess, I, Alex, I know, but I'll let you guys introduce yourself. It'd be good to know who's here.
Yeah, I'm Alex Funters. I'm the Science Department Chair at West. I teach biology and chemistry.
And the nerd club. And Bane, all right.
Kate Linsman, I currently teach Earth Science all day, every day.
I'm Erin Hogan. I teach Biology at, at East High.
I'll stand since behind the computer.
Thank you.
I'm Rodney Wallace, and I teach at East High, and this year I teach chemistry, but next year I'll teach chemistry and physics.
And I'm Jennifer Sells. I am Science Teacher Expo, and I teach Earth and Space and Physical Science.
Thank you all so much for all of your efforts, and clearly we have a lot of questions, so I really appreciate you coming forward tonight and giving us, giving us all the 411. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything further for them?
I just have one last question. When, when it comes time to, for parents to help with the homework, what resources and tools do you offer to parents and families to help their students do the homework? And I would imagine that's with any, including math, any other subjects.
So one of the things we felt very strongly about, at least at the high school level, was a physical book. So the students will have physical copies of books, and in addition to that, they have online access to the textbook. Beyond that, you know, I communicate with my parents, especially if we're having some sort of conflict. So beyond that, I imagine it would be teacher, teacher interaction.
I know more and more, especially with Chromebooks coming up the line, Google Classroom is a really big resource that a lot of our teachers are using. So I'm constantly updating Google Classroom, not only with assignments, but it's more of like a communication board of like, hey, this is what we did today, if you're absent, any videos we watched, and I think, and I encourage my students to go and re-watch the videos that we watched in class online. And then when parents communicate with me and say, hey, I have no idea, I get to add them as guardians, and they can access that feed as well. So I think that is something that's becoming more and more prevalent. I know right now, all of my students, when we got the two-to-one Chromebooks, they're like, I have a classroom set of Chromebooks. That's something I initiated, and it's had really good success with the parent communication as well.
You can watch everything they watch in class, because my daughter's in Ms. Linsman's class, and so every Friday she sends an update on Google, and it's so cool, cause I can see when stuff was due, but I can also watch the stuff that they watch, so that not, you know what I mean? Believe me, I'm not a scientist, but at least I can sort of get a perspective of what, what, you know, what they've seen, and that helps, so. And I can vouch for Mr. Conyers reaching out when there's issues too, so.
And just one last question as far as the price. Have, did you find this time around, I don't know if any of you were around the last time, but just researching like the physical books, have they become a little more competitive in price, based on all the online books?
So I'm the one that did all of the contacting for the pricing. We actually chose to go with less textbooks this time, so that's why the pricing was much less than when we did EarthCom last year. Each classroom is gonna get a set of textbooks to have as a resource, instead of each student getting a textbook. And then we opted to go with digital copies for each student to have, so every student will have access to their own textbook via the online resources, but then they'll have the physical one if needed through the classroom that they can check out as. But I don't, they, the textbook pricing, it wasn't really much different than what we were looking at last year. And I did just wanna add, um, this team has spent, this is the third year that they've had the Science Committee, so this hasn't been a short process. They've gone through this for multiple years. We've looked at books for multiple years, so it wasn't just textbooks that we got this year that we were looking at, and they're not the sole decision-makers either. There was a lot of back and forth between the buildings. They would look at things as a committee, they would bring them back to their building PLCs, get feedback from the teachers there, and then come back with their recommendations, so it's not just this team making the decisions, there are ones that help spearhead it, but we wanted to make sure that we included all of the teachers in all of the buildings, so everyone had a say in what we were looking at.
India, do you have a question?
Just quickly, um, since you were ordering, I would just note on the ordering list, like for East and West, and their items that they were being picked out, and I noticed like, it said West needs, and it's like zero, and then East needs a lot. So, just, just ask, why, why is that?
Each building had different budgets throughout the years, and so, and also, West Science Department is a little larger than East Science Department, so when we got the materials list of what would be needed for the curriculum, I had the teachers in the buildings go through and say what they had in their buildings, and just identifying where we would need to fill gaps that might be there. So it was almost a time for, I have maybe East to give a little bit of a wish list on what they wanna have that didn't have prior, just maybe due to size of building and budget. I don't know building budgets to know what they had, but.
All right. All right, thank you all. Anything further? Great, then all those in favor of approving the adoption of the high school science curriculum, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, you guys, we appreciate it. The next item on our agenda then, that concludes our consent agenda items. The next item then is the Hoover-Chiller bid approval, which is item I on page fifty-one, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from Modus Engineering and approve the Hoover Middle School-Chiller replacement bids as presented for a total contract cost of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, India, and I know Jake's here tonight. Thank you, Jake, from Modus. And I just wanna give a little bit of background, that we did have a public hearing on this Chiller project, and this is something that we've been expecting to replace. We had a public hearing two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, or three, a month ago, and then did our bid opening. And then those are part of the exhibit that we have here this evening. And so Jake, I'll turn it over to the board members and see if people have questions for you tonight.
Who's the manufacturer?
Dyken. So if you, if you had a copy of the, the bid tab, we had two bidders, pretty close bids, and then the Dyken Chiller was alternate number one, which was a deduct of six thousand five hundred dollars for young fungian heating.
And you've, you felt that's equivalent quality?
Yep.
Is that the one with the six?
Yeah, that has more, more smaller compressors.
So in theory, that should be more efficient at partial load, shouldn't it?
Correct.
When is the scheduled installation, and will it affect any classroom type?
Scheduled installation will be this summer, and completion date is supposed to be August first. So it shouldn't have much impact. So it shouldn't have much impact.
And you're comfortable, the contractor, and you've had experience with this brand or manufacturer of Chiller?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
And just to clarify too, the bids came in right where we were expecting them to as well, so.
So while the Chiller, how long is it going to be from the shutdown of the existing one to installation of this?
Well, last day of school is, I believe, we had June 7th.
Seven.
So probably sometime after that time to mid to late July, I would expect. And then they'd probably have it started back up and getting it ready for August 1st.
So does there need to be anything to control humidity in the interim?
I mean, you'll have a period of time where you don't have cooling, but with kids not in the building, if we turn ventilation off, your humidity will be a lot less of an issue.
In theory, we could do that for every building.
You could, with no students in the building.
Normally, normally you don't use a dehumidifier, a separate dehumidifier or something too.
Not necessarily.
Do you notice Hoover have lined ductwork?
I'm not sure. We didn't necessarily get into that with the Chiller project.
If it does, I think it, I think that ought to be looked at so that we don't end up with mold in the ductwork.
Okay. We do have some allowances on the project, so in the bids, we have a $10,000 allowance. So that could potentially be something that allowances are put towards.
I know if it's needed, it probably should be monitored though.
And Jake, isn't this one of two Chillers? Am I correct? That this is, that there are, there's a second one? This is replacing one that's already, that hasn't been working at full capacity?
No, this is replacing one that has been working.
That has been working. Okay, okay.
It's to the point where it's ready to be replaced.
It's ready, okay. I didn't know if we could use a different system to sort of, granted, it's not going to be at 100%, but that.
There are other systems in the building, so you're not necessarily fully out of cooling, but that's one of the bigger systems.
Could they open up the door to Lou Henry Moore to get air from there perhaps?
That could potentially help as well.
They may take a little bit from Lou, but it might be able to help and we get some of it.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, we don't know what the weather's going to be, but in critical areas, I think it's worth monitoring the humidity at least and then doing a local.
Well, like the music room specifically, you know, because instruments and that can be well affected.
Wow, we have a facilities meeting tomorrow morning. Let's make sure we talk to Marty about that.
Good point.
I don't know if you're going to be there Jake, but we'll take notes and take it to Marty.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, anything further then on the Chiller replacement? All right, then all those in favor of approving of the bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item J, which is the Classroom Interactive Display Purchase, which is on page 54. And that recommended motion. Matt, you, oh, this one's not so bad. I'm excited. I'm kidding, I read it earlier. Is that the Board of Education approved the purchase of 46 Promethean Active Panels and four mobile stands from GDWG at a total cost of $167,360. Thank you, Sue, and a second? All right, you too? All right, I'm giving it to Rhonda then. All right, and then I'm opening it up to Mr. O'Brien. Welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So each Waterloo Schools classroom has an interactive display currently. Our older, actually across most of the district, the predominant interactive display that we have is known as the Promethean Active Board. Those were installed almost a decade ago in some of our oldest installations. So between eight and 10 years ago, those were installed. And we're really at the point where we have to start looking at a lifecycle replacement for those, their end of life. And it's time to start getting a plan to start phasing in some newer technology. So the interactive display realm has obviously evolved a little bit since the eight to 10 years ago that we first installed those. So right now, there's two predominant pools of interactive displays. There are interactive projectors, which actually use kind of a short throw projector, actually kind of similar to the Promethean Board behind there, except it's a much shorter throw. But instead of projecting on a particular special board, it just actually projects on a whiteboard and then uses sensors to kind of sense where the pens are at or where the touch is taking place. So that's kind of one realm of interactive displays. The other one that's predominant right now is basically a giant smart interactive television. So think of your home screen flat panel, but make it a lot bigger, make it touch capable, and then also put a smart computer behind it to be able to have applications and whatnot on it. And that's kind of that particular realm. We actually installed a set of those at the sixth grade classrooms and a couple of WCC Waterloo Career Center classrooms earlier this year, which actually put us in a really good spot because that gave us a pool of teachers that we could lean on to get their experiences and to really kind of form a focus group for us to look at which of those two types of interactive technology they preferred. And it actually was unanimous amongst that group of sixth grade teachers that they selected the active panels, the Promethean interactive televisions that I mentioned over the interactive projectors. We actually met with that group, took them down, showed them, because the WCC also has some interactive projectors. So we showed those to that group as well. They had the opportunity to talk to a teacher who had been using that. A lot of those teachers were veteran teachers who also used the older interactive Promethean Active Boards. And it was unanimous that the group chose the Promethean Active Panels, which is part of the proposal in front of you, as their preferred choice. So that was really encouraging. Oftentimes, it's difficult to get consensus amongst the group, so it was encouraging that we were on the right track after we received that unanimous approval, so to speak, from that group. So the proposal in front of you tonight actually has two components to it. It includes Promethean branded, interactive, active panels for our sixth grade at the remaining middle schools. So I mentioned, we already did that at Central, so this will install them at Hoover, Bunker, and Carver. The reason why we chose sixth grade at the other schools is because we already had those installed at Central. So it seemed like a really equitable way to have that be across the district as opposed to targeting just a particular school. So that's a component of it. The other component is actually some of those are allocated towards the initial classrooms that will open up as part of Phase 3 for the Waterloo Career Center, those classrooms which will be opening this fall. So we wanted to couple those two purchases together to get the best pricing that we possibly could because obviously the higher volume we have, the better pricing we can get from vendors. So that's the proposal in front of you tonight. I do want to note that part of our lifecycle replacement, the reason why we're wanting to push forward with this at sixth grade, is that will then allow us to replace those active boards that are in use with those classrooms, which then can be used to parts to keep the rest of the district alive for basically another year. So that was, it's kind of a dual purpose of both trying to phase in replacements as well as free up some equipment that then we can use as parts for the rest of the district.
What was the cost difference between the projector type and the TV type?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. So we only, this year we only bid the interactive display type because we had already landed on that. Last year, we actually did look at the price difference between the two. We actually looked at a brand, pretty much the predominantly used type of interactive projectors, and bid that against the active panels which are before you. And at that point, what we saw was the initial cost of the active panels, which is the proposal before you, was higher. But when we calculated the total cost of ownership, it was roughly a wash. And the reason why I say that is with active panels, there's no lamps or anything like that that has to be replaced like there are in some projectors. But the bigger cost difference comes in with the installation and the cabling. With interactive projectors, they're mounted above a whiteboard, so you have to run cabling in the wall to go down from the wall to get to where the teacher's going to actually plug into. Where with the active panels, you don't have to really run cabling in the wall. You can plug just directly into the side of the TV, so you don't have to actually either within the wall or run raceway, that type of thing. So by the time we actually, we actually bid that out as an alternate with one of the WCC phases to get the costs of those, and that's how we determined that it was roughly a wash between the two when you're looking at that total cost of both the equipment as well as the remodeling or the installation costs.
So the two potential suppliers, it looks like there's some sort of a discount mechanism for the one and?
Yeah, they've just bid it differently. So the one supplier kind of embedded our discount, so to speak, or the, what we're getting below list price within their bid. Another one bid it as a, you know, each line item and then a separate line item for a discount that they were giving us. So just bid differently. So both bids are identical in terms of what they're offering us. They were just expressed differently, but it's the total cost that you want to look at.
What does CDWG stand for and where are they based out of?
I'm not sure. So CDW is actually a predominant, a big, big player, Fortune 500 company in the realm of technology. They do a lot of business with lots of other folks. The G at the end of it is actually their government arm, so they work with government and education. They're in the Chicagoland area of Illinois.
And then where's Haddock out of?
Haddock is based out of Kansas.
So the new boards, they require special software now to run on those?
So that's actually another factor that the teachers actually preferred with these, probably more so than the hardware itself was the software option. The nice thing with these new active panels is that both the existing software that the teachers have been used to working with and that a lot of them have put a lot of energy into designing what are called flip charts, which are kind of interactive presentations that they work with their students. So all of those work on it, but then there's also additional software that come with them as well. Essentially, they come with, for those of you that are slightly techie in Android device, so if you have an Android phone, Dr. Smith's face lit up when I said that. Sorry, I had to call you out. Essentially, it's a smart, think of like your phone strapped behind it that then is able to be a mini-computer that has additional apps that are actually installed as well. So there's actually a lot of different ways that they can be used, either by hooking their computer directly to it and using the traditional software they're used to using, or there's some wireless or even without hooking a computer to it, it can kind of function as a standalone basis, which is a big improvement over our current active boards because our current active boards are useless without a computer. These can be used with or without a computer actually hooked to it.
I just noticed that, I tried to display on one of my laptop the other day and it wouldn't let me.
On one of the new active?
Yes, one at Career Center.
Okay, in the active panels?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll.
I don't know which one it was, but it would, they structured it by, I had special software on my computer to display on it and it's like, well, that makes it a little bit challenging.
Well, and actually you don't. If you just have an HDMI cable, you can hook directly to it and you don't need to have special software. But there might have been some confusion with the input or there could have been some other factors at play. But if you have special software, it'll do more stuff, but if you have an HDMI input on your computer, you can hook directly to it.
Perhaps your security is working correctly.
That was good. There you go.
It was a test.
Yes, it was all by design.
Matt, I was just wondering as far as, do you monitor or how do you feel the usership of the Promethean boards throughout the entire district is?
So that's an interactive, an interesting question. You know, like anything else, we have folks all across the spectrum in terms of their usage. I get really nervous trying to classify their degree of usage by just like time actually using it though, because there's times where, yes, it could be in use, you know, an entire class period, but maybe not used as effectively as if it was used in a different type of purpose. So I would be really nervous trying to just throw out, you know, a number in terms of the percentage of time that it was actually getting used. I just think that would be inappropriate because there's, you know, certain activities that make absolute perfect sense to use it as a tool in this way and other activities where, you know, that doesn't make sense. So that's really been our message with teachers as well, and you've heard me say that with Chromebooks as well, that, you know, just because the tool is in your hands doesn't mean it's appropriate to be used all of the time. Instruction is number one, and then you have various technology tools that you're able to utilize to help you with that instruction, but the focus is still on instruction.
Well, and I guess I was specifically looking for if it's a low, low usership as far as recycling that to other classrooms that have a higher usership, you know, to get more life out of the each board.
Yeah, I would say it is definitely not a low usership in that anytime, you know, like any technology, it's not, it's not foolproof. It has issues. A lamp goes out or a component goes out, et cetera. So, you know, we try to jump on, we as a tech department try to jump on those because if not, teachers really, really do miss those pretty much across the board. It would be overstating if I said teachers were lost without them, but it really is a central part of their instruction because it is front and center and, you know, that's really what a lot of their instruction has been centered around. So I think the usage in terms of a percentage of time is important or is a relatively high number to that question. I just don't feel comfortable saying how effective the initiative is based off of it being a high number, I guess is what I was trying to say.
And I think, I think the usership is really high. What I think might be true is I've been in a few classrooms where I think that it's what I would consider a more simplistic use of them, where it's maybe more just a display where they're just projecting something up there. But I've also been in classrooms where they have kids using, you know, really truly interacting with the technology that's available. So I would say the general usage is high.
Yep.
I don't know that you would go into a classroom and have them not using it, but sometimes I think there are classrooms, you know, occasionally that, and maybe to your point, maybe for that particular lesson, that's an appropriate usage of it, but I think there's, I don't know, that's just a additional comment.
No, I think, I think that's well said.
All right, is there anything further for Matt? All right, then all those in favor of approving the Classroom Interactive Display Purchase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Don't go anywhere, we're not done.
Still here.
All right, the next item on our agenda then is another technology purchase, and this is item K on page 56. And this recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 1,760 Sunrise rugged laptop cases at a total cost of 40,480 dollars and 4,000 night speed relay licenses at a total cost of $47,000.
So move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Also been discussion and explanation I know is forthcoming.
Absolutely. So both of these items are actually related to what the Board approved at the previous meeting, which was the expansion of our secondary program to give Chromebooks or to loan Chromebooks to all of our secondary students. So I actually mentioned at that time in the board document that we would be bringing cases to you at a later date for approval. So as promised, these are the cases that were requesting to be purchased with those. These were selected after some conversations with staff. Cases are an interesting thing because lots of folks have lots of different opinions on whether they should be sleeves or cases and pouches and storage and what's better, et cetera. So we really think that this was a good compromise between what all of the varying schools were actually after. It's actually a case that has a lot of flexibility in that the Chromebook can be used within the case. So the case can actually just open, kind of flip open, and they don't even have to take the Chromebook out of it. But if teachers and schools want to allow, then students could still use the Chromebooks outside of the cases as well. So it's got an option there. It has an option for a pocket for a power brick to be carried to school if that's something that the school wants the students to do as well. So it was also a higher quality, more versatile case. We're trying to put a little bit more money into kind of protecting those devices and giving some additional protection around our students. So that's why the price point is slightly higher than the. So that's why the price point is slightly higher than the, the cases that we've purchased in the past. That was a deliberate decision in trying to buy a little bit of a higher quality case there. Uh, the second component in front of you is actually a software purchase, and that software, uh, is kind of a dual-purpose software. So it will do filtering for all of our Chromebooks, internet filtering both within the district and outside of the district. Um, but also per teacher request, it will also have some classroom management functionality or some functions to help teachers with classroom management. So it will give some teacher, the teacher's ability to, for example, do, um, free screens of their class or do like a screen capture from those students to be able to do, um, some additional internet restrictions in terms of filtering within those as well. I do want to note that we've always filtered Chromebooks, so that's nothing new. We've always filtered, um, all of our district devices in terms of internet filtering within the district, and then Chromebooks that go home are also filtered outside of the district. Um, the difference being that this is kind of an all-in-one software, so the goal is that this will allow us to replace our, our district's filter. We have a dedicated filter right now which does those pieces. So with this software and also coupled with the firewall that the board approved the purchase of, uh, several months ago as well, those two components will allow us to retire that district filter, which will be a, an annual cost savings around twelve thousand dollars or so. So, um, this is a, a one-time purchase, it's not a recurring expense, um, for that number of licenses, but then will allow us, uh, coupled with the firewall purchase to, to save some annual expenditures.
You say, you say it's a one-time purchase, is there a maintenance fee that it goes along with?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, and that's actually what was really unique with this software is most software, if it's not a subscription model where it's the same cost every year, then you're exactly right, you actually have to pay the software cost and then you pay a lower amount of that software in maintenance. Um, this, these licenses are structured in a really unique way where it's kind of a one-time all bundled together. So it's basically good for the lifetime of the device, um, is the way that they do it, so they know the lifespan of a Chromebook is, you know, three to four years. So they're kind of coupling all of that, bundling that together in that one-time cost, which, um, is a, a nice thing for us to then not have to worry about that recurring expense.
And so with this, you, the quantity of four thousand, so then in turn we should have four thousand Chromebooks?
Um, so that's actually a little high. I, I shot high for a couple of reasons. One is because we got a price break at that quantity level and we knew that ultimately the, the license, because we're not paying an annual recurring cost, um, we weren't out anything for buying a few licenses extra, even if we don't end up using those for another year, um, since it's not like we're paying, you know, a yearly cost for those. Um, so it was worth it to get to the level of, of a price break. Um, but that also is going to allow us to do some experimentation and some other, uh, pieces. Uh, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is, uh, what makes sense at, say, our PBDA's and at our Expo Alternative School in terms of their next device, all of their computers, um, our older Windows-based computers that are nearing retirement. So, um, having these extra licenses are going to allow us to do some pilots and some experimentation with those extra licenses in those environments to, to help get some teacher feedback of what device actually makes sense in those environments.
All right, anything further for Matt? Everybody good? All right, thanks, Matt.
You bet.
I think a few fewer questions than the last time, so.
[laughing]
Um, in any, any case, all those in favor then of approving this technology purchase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for the evening, so I will move on then to our monthly financial report. This is item L on page fifty-seven, and I will turn it over to Michael Coughlin. This is for information only.
Again, in the, in the back section of the financial reports, you have the normal reports of the cash balances and the revenue and the expenditure for all the different funds, and you can go into the detail of how they flow over the different months. If you're so interested in different aspects and can certainly use that as a reference if you have questions about anything. But, um, I wanted to, again, kind of focus on the overall effect, um, saying that the numbers that are coming in are what we expect and it is keeping the district healthy and, um, I just wanted to refer to the report that I just, uh, was handed out to you, which is a summary of, uh, the general fund on the front page with the colors on it. Um, and then it compares the general fund year-to-date to where it had, where it was the last four years. So as you look across there, uh, in the green, the total revenue, you can see that we're about even with where we've been. But the yellow up above, and I mentioned that last time because I thought it would be caught up by, um, the end of March, but it was not. There was a Title I payment that was, uh, still waiting to be sent out by the Department of Education, and that did come in last week. So there really is about a two and a half million dollar addition to that, two point seven million, so that's going to, uh, bring us into a more favorable stance as we compare to the previous years. And then you compare, uh, the total of the expenses in the blue box. Um, we are running a little bit ahead of last year, but a little bit behind where we were in some of the previous years. So it is still forecasting that we're going to be about a hundred and, a hundred and thirty million as far as the total expenditures for the end of the year, and that's right on target with where we originally thought we did, uh, and we usually always do, I don't know if that's a correct way to stay, say that. When you budget, um, you usually budget conservative, low on revenues, high on expenses, and you expect it to be a little bit the other way. So that is proving to be true, that the expenses are coming in below budget, um, revenues are about right on what we were expecting. Um, so we expect to have, uh, the end-of-the-year balances very similar to where they were at the end of seventeen, sixteen, seventeen. Now, you've already been part of some of the changes that is happening with, um, bargaining and so forth, how we're making these adjustments to expenditures for next year. Um, one of the things that you're seeing this year because of our balance was the, um, technology purchases that Matt has gone through the last two board meetings are all coming out of the general fund rather than the PEPAL fund, which then that helps us with projects with PEPAL, which we're going to be reviewing and dealing with, um, tomorrow in the finance committee. So I just wanted to show you that report, that things are, uh, functioning, uh, as we're expecting. The health of the district is good in all of the funds. And then on page seventy-one, you have the graphs, again, of all the major funds, general management, sales tax revenue and the PEPAL. Uh, and you can see that the shaded green is, uh, about the same or better than it was in the year past. The one change you now see on this month, uh, for March under the thirty-three Sales Tax Revenue Fund, uh, that one blip in the middle is the Sales Tax Revenue Bond. So that's the money that came in that will now be slowly being used to pay off the WCC remodel renovation project. So, um, the regular green on there is still what's in the account, um, not affected by the WCC, but will also show a separate track of, um, the amount of using that Sales Tax Revenue Bond. And again, as you saw on the first report, this one also shows, uh, the two prior years of what the balances were at this time, and they're all, um, the same, close to the same or they've improved, and they're all, uh, very much in line with what we were expecting. So, uh, this is what will be used as we head into building the eighteen nineteen budget, which is hard to believe to start seeing those numbers already, so, but that's on the doorstep. One other thing I did want to mention that, um, there will be, um, at the, in the May board meeting, will be a budget amendment for seventeen eighteen. Now, what that means is because we refinanced the bonds, there was a, a huge spike in expenditure that had to be shown for that, and that was not anticipated or known what that amount was going to be when we recertified a year and a half ago for seventeen eighteen. Um, so it's, doesn't mean that it has any effect on any of the revenues or the taxes or so on, it's just upping the, um, total expenditures that the district can, uh, expand because of this change in financing. So that has to go through the process of, of being published in the paper and then it will come, there'll be a hearing, and then, um, the board will approve that as, uh, increased expenditures for that purpose.
When is that due by?
It's due by May thirtieth.
Have you had any, uh, information from any bonds since we issued ours and what percent?
I haven't, um, asked that question to see how they're, and what trends are of other people doing it. I haven't heard of any other bond sales specifically, um, but I will ask that and report back.
Well, thank you, Michael. Any more questions for him regarding this report? Shan Lee did have to step out to her senior student, senior night at VAN tonight, so I will be concluding the meeting. Um, so next up, if there's no more questions, is, uh, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, um, I have, I have three things tonight. Uh, first, I had the opportunity today to attend the Rotary Luncheon, um, which was the Academic Honors Award banquet, and so we had, I believe there were, uh, about a hundred and fifty extra people in addition to the downtown Rotary. So it was, matter of fact, it got so full that we had to set up extra tables, um, because some people who hadn't RSVP'd yes showed up and we were thrilled to have them, and there was enough food, so it was great. Uh, recognized students who, um, were the, had the, um, had strong academic success throughout their four years with the highest GPAs, and so there were, for example, there were twenty students from East, twenty students from West, some students from Expo, and then also the private schools in the area. So, um, that was a, it was just a really great event, and they had a speaker who just talked about, um, you know, the power of when you leave, um, Waterloo, you know, um, keeping your foundation firm. And then one of the sentiments that was expressed over and over, um, was an invitation to everybody who left our district, uh, to, as they go out to different colleges or whatever they choose to do, to come back into our district and to work here. There was a strong sentiment that we want, we want our young, um, bright students to return to Waterloo and, and work right here. And so, um, I saw a few heads nodded, and I'm sure there's a few kids who said, nope, I'm ready to go somewhere else and let my wings fly, and that's great, but there was, there was a strong sentiment of an invitation to come back, so. Um, the second thing I wanted to address is, uh, on the week of, uh, May eighth, which we do not have a board meeting between now and then, our next board meeting is May fourteenth. And the reason I'm bringing up now, the week prior to our return, is actually National Teachers Week. And so I just, I, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't make note of that tonight. Um, I, I wish, actually it'd be great if it were the week that we actually had a meeting because we could do some, some, you know, some type of special celebration, but I just, I really appreciate what our, what our teachers offer and the professionals that they are, and, um, we have one week designated to celebrate them, but I think they should be celebrated as, as all staff because it's, it's hard to be an educator and it just takes special, special people, and, and like the lady said, tonight, the reward is so great. And so we're just, you know, we, we will do some things in-house for them, but I just thought it would be, um, prudent to mention and wish them a happy teacher, teacher week or educator week. And then the, the third thing I wanted to mention tonight is certainly not in the, you know, in a happy spirit in any way, shape or form. Um, we, we were struck by tragedy this weekend with our, with our, um, in our community with a family, um, suffering in a fire. We lost, uh, one of our students and, and his mom, and, um, I actually probably might not have mentioned this tonight, but they, they have released the names now, so I usually hold off on that, so those names are public. But, um, we, we are working very hard to support the family, to support the staff, to support the students and their families. And so I know that it is a lot of, um, there's a lot of angst in, in dealing with grief and, and the school is not intending to substitute for families or parents in any way, shape or form, but we always are there to guide and, and support families. And so, um, in that, in that spirit, we will have counselors available, um, at our buildings to, to, uh, talk with, with students and, and certainly with staff and any families who might need that support. So we just, um, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to this family. Um, I, I can't imagine losing, you know, one member of a family, much less two, two members of a family, so, um, you know, we just, our hearts go out to them. It's, it's, it's just a tragedy all around.
Thank you, Jane. Um, we'll start tonight with India.
Okay.
Um, I want to say thank you to Esther Williams for the invitation for the Autism Spectrum. I did get there a little bit late, but it was a remarkable event at the Gallagher Blue Dorm. Um, it was a huge showcase to see our students out there, um, to be applauded, to know that they are working so strong in, in their gifts. And so it was a real gift to be able to be there and to be able to support, um, North Star and the teachers and families who put on that event, so I just wanted to say thank you for that invite, it was great.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jessie.
Nothing tonight.
All right, Rhonda. Esther?
I just wanted to give a, a couple of congratulations, um, to a couple of our own, uh, district employees or teachers. Coach Lonnie Moore, um, was, uh, um, given the award for pursuing, pursuing victory with honor for the Champions of Character Award. Um, and then we have a couple of, um, teachers who received the Gold Star Award. Um, I believe one from, uh, Becker, one from Hoover and one from Kingsley, so just wanted to give them a congratulations and a job well done.
Thank you, Esther. Lyle?
Aye.
And I guess I get to go last tonight. I just wanted to remind everyone of this Thursday is the Sparkling Academic Excellence Breakfast at seven AM. It's sponsored, it's a big fundraiser, it's a really fun event, um, for the Waterloo Schools Foundation. You can go and see all the, um, kids from every school displayed. We have, um, music talent from, um, the schools there also, and it's a, it's a neat event and, um, you can support the district. And there's a, um, alumni speaker speaking and people coming back. I believe it's Mark Hanson this year. Yep. So that will be, um, an awesome event. And, and then lastly, I just wanted to, um, just make a comment about the, um, you know, the school walkouts that we had last week, and I was glad that, um, they were, um, done very peacefully and, and I appreciate that. And I just, um, I, I'm just encouraged that our district allows, um, the students that want to protest and the students who will walk out, um, that don't want to, that they're held in equal accord. So I just wanted to make that mention. Um, so that's all, anyone have anything else tonight? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sub move.
In a second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
I think you got aged out.
Are you okay? Tell me about your dissertation. Where are you?
Just ask.
She knows.
I'm queen of information.
I wanted to know who was the principal of the school.
In a certain year?
A certain year.
Sure, tell me what, tell me what school, what year it is.
I'm looking at eighty-six.
Okay.
Mr. Hanson was the main, was that not Hanson?
No, it was, uh...
Is he related to Mark? No relation?
He was the Hanson that used to end up being over here as the, um, um, he was like Jack, he was like Marty. He came over here to do this, what is that, what is, Bill Han-, I'll have to look.
It was either eighty-six or eighty-seven.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven.
he was like Marty, he came over here to do this, what is that, what is, Bill Han, I'll have to look.
It was either eighty-six or eighty-seven.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven.
But I know it was Hanson. Hanson.
Hanson. So, they get all this stuff too?
Maybe I can look here, but I don't think so.
Yes, I believe, yeah, indeed, right, so I just wanted to make sure that all included that high school.
Okay. You didn't, oh, 'cause she walked it in.
Yeah, 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 so that's why I was like, that is quite awful, that's...